I want to welcome everybody back to this special session of the Reno County Commission. Today, we're focused on entering the conversation and decision-making process of the county's allocation of ARPA funding. Maybe I'll appreciate everybody being here. I know there's a lot of stakeholders here, and thank you for continued interest and work on this issue. Randy, you and I had an opportunity to talk yesterday about kind of a game plan. I can have you to start and see where the commission sits on this. Did you have any early comments on anything you want to correct us on? Any highlights on the memo you sent out at all or anything?
Well, and I'll pull that up just as a reminder. Part of the packet, kind of explain the process, what we've done so far, the categories where the ARPA funds can be used. But one of the things that I was looking for hopefully today was to kind of formalize where we're going a little bit more on the priority buckets. And then kind of as a really grant application, but applications, as more keep coming in, they're slowly coming in, the county commission setting a deadline for all the applications. If there's anyone that in the community that feels they still can, still have a project to get that into us by a certain date, I would say probably, I was looking at maybe May 20th at the very latest. But get those in, send them into my office, and then I can put them with this other packet, put spreadsheets together to kind of show the commission the total amount requested, but then for clarify the buckets or the categories that the commission has set up. I believe right now you've set up childcare, housing, and economic development. There are requests within that, and there's also other items that have come in that are outside that. But if we kind of, or if I knew kind of at least maybe even more formally the ballpark dollar amounts you want for the buckets, then that'll help a little bit. So that's kind of what I was looking for. And then the other question was, we had talked in meetings about whether the administration of the funds was going to be handed off to a third party to assist with the dispersment of the, or dispersment and oversight of the funds, or if it was going to be completely in-house or different buckets. I believe what staffs recommending is that we handle most of it in-house, but some of the larger programs, for example, Interfaith for money they get, or United Way for K-Ready, that they handle a lot of their own grant work that they do on a regular basis, but then still have some oversight, a staff at the county to see that instead of contracting with community foundation, or Widow Brian, or an outside company. So I just wanted to see if the commission was on the same page, or if you wanted to do something different.
Okay. Well, I might, I might start, and then I'll pause for the other commissioners to weigh in on an agenda here today. I would generally suggest we focus on the former, the buckets and where we're going to land. The administration side, I think getting a more formal recommendation from Randy might be better than us diving into the details on that. But here's how I would suggest we think about it today, and then I'll pause for your comments. I think we should start with childcare, since it seems to be the most fully developed of the buckets, as we say, and talk about a way to go ahead and allocate a number to that, and then talk about how we would like to see that stakeholder group work with the administration to bring forth a final proposal and agreement on how that would be administered and how it would be governed. Then look towards housing. I know I made a comment at the last meeting that felt a little uneasy without addressing some of the other topics related to, you know, potential multiplier effect and new housing and so forth. And so let's, I propose we talk through whether that's fully developed and ready to be allocated, or whether we should send it back to the administration for work within the housing stakeholders for, for better development of that plan. And then I would see the rest as kind of the miscellaneous bucket that we haven't fully developed. I think Randy's saying he's still getting stuff in, and we might want to consider setting a deadline and then allowing administration to formulate a full list, maybe make some early recommendations on that for a later determination. So I'll stop there, see where you guys are at, if that's an amenable strategy, or if you have different thoughts.
Well, I felt like that we're ready to start doing some degree of allocation to buckets. But I think in respect to the county administrator's concern that have we told people there's a deadline for requesting, maybe we're not there at this point. We do have more time to take care of this. It's unfortunate that we keep asking people to come to meetings, and we are moving slow. But I think moving slow in this case with this amount of money is good. The county administrator's concerned that we've made this an open situation and told people that they can request. And I think I support the fact that he should announce that we are going to have a deadline of May 20th, and nobody that has requested will be considered after that point. I think where I disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, is that if we're going to wait to see what requests in total would be there on May 20th, I don't think we're ready to allocate a number to childcare at this point. I'd like to go back to that work that we did a month ago, I think, when we created some bucket numbers and so forth, and then worked from that. But I don't think we're ready to say that childcare gets X amount.
Mr. Scherz. You know, things pop up, and one of the things that popped up to me in, in looking at allocations was some of the infrastructure that we've just found out that we need to do at some point in time, and how we're going to do about it, is pretty well known. But there is still an option to that, and that would entail quite a bit of funds that we were not anticipating until the full details were showed with regarding to engineer and expansion in a, I guess I call it a government entity, it's basically a business for a government entity, that may require considerable funds that we weren't planning on, that I don't know how we could fit into a budget or set it up that way. That I think one of the reasons for having ARPA, one of the uses of ARPA was for infrastructure. Now, that set aside one thought in coming up with actual numbers. Now, we can put approximate numbers down, but that doesn't guarantee anything yet. Just because of that situation that arrived that required some further engineering and further purchases and further expansion, that was not known two weeks ago. So I'm looking at that, and I really, because also depending upon how it's decided to handle the overseeing and of the different allocations, that could determine, you know, up to $200,000 or $300,000 of that allocation. And I think the county, since we are required to be responsible for this money, seeing that that could enter into the play of whether the county supervises this after the granting of this, of the applications, or whether it's done in-house, that a lot of the requests have already included up to 5% for operation, for managing that, those funds and taking care of those funds. So from that standpoint, we can give some generalization, but that's as far as I'm willing to go now with regard to that. I think we're still in that area of economic development. I agree with other commissioners that we're still with the three basic: economic development, housing, and childcare. Those are the three basic, and then we have the others to include, which also includes all the other asking. But I am definitely in favor of May 20th deadline.
On the infrastructure, do you feel like those, assuming they're utilities, that they can't be funded through a rate base?
Well, you're going to have to bond it and then add that in. And I think that we're looking at what we're doing, there's going to be, the rate schedule changed, yes, been way overdue, but I just feel that I'm not sure that we're ready to answer that question yet. Randy is working on that right now.
I, like, I know I've said it enough times, but I'm really hesitant to use this funding for rate-based utilities that should fund their usage and their construction through a rate, through a rate on the bill. I just, I'm not a, not a fan. I would, you know, I don't know that I'm suggesting, I don't feel like we're moving much today, but I'm not suggesting we define the number. Is there a number? Like, I feel like we ought to give a lot of credence to all the effort put forth and the recommendations back to us in the 40 different conversations that were made throughout the county and the, and the result of that. And to that point, rather than delaying and then allowing other non-priority items that didn't come from those recommendations to infiltrate this process, we, we kind of make some good faith efforts to allocate at least a minimum. I'm not saying, you know, I feel like we could get to a number for childcare, given like, seems to be a very unified effort across all agencies. We want to tackle this, and they're ready to do it. And I feel like we could at least give them a minimum number and cut that, cut that off and say, let's, like, go get to work on that, get with the county administration on a final agreement.
But they're not ready to work on it. Their report's not due until September, you know. We're not holding them up. They're, they're working on a, a report that's being done by K-State, I believe. We're not holding them up by delaying this a little bit on the final number. At this point in time, I don't even know where, where they want to, you know, other than, I think, three general buckets of childcare that they wanted to put it into. I, and, you know, Mr. Chairman, we all kind of have priorities, and you've made your, the childcare a priority, but if you read that report thoroughly, they had three priorities on that situation. And then the administration of those groups came in with wanting childcare to be at the top. But the three priorities were the three buckets that we've, we've come up with, with housing, economic development, and childcare. And I just think that until we get to the point that we divide in that manner, we're doing a disservice to the other two by picking a number for childcare and when it's not needed at this point in time.
I'd like to, I'd like to personally hear, let's take some of these, and I'd like to hear some comments from childcare, and then housing and that. Because I've got some questions regarding, even though I've been a real fan of this, I still have some questions with regard to childcare. Well, you know, I've got a number down here that I've put down here based upon some things. And I think, I don't have any trouble giving generalizations, although everybody knows that the final number is not in yet.
Well, before we open the forum up again on this, so neither one of you is willing to say, yeah, the county's ready to put at least $4 million to childcare?
I might be willing to say that, but what good does that do when we're, we haven't allocated the rest of the funds? I think we ought to allocate all this at the same time. We all agree we're going to allocate some amount of money to childcare. So your number's higher than that, my number's about what you just suggested, so I don't know what three people are going to vote for, and, and the other numbers aren't, we don't even know who's going to apply by May 20th.
Well, I'm trying to move the ball here. Like, the ball is not moving right now, and to get something, some assurance, like, I feel like, again, that group has made the best coordinated effort. It's identified as the top priority, and it, you know, we, you know, they came in and said, spin the whole thing on that. We said, no. And then we set a third, and every time we come back, it keeps getting peeled back further and further.
I don't know that that's been peeled back further and further. I think there's significant interest in being very, very generous and fair to that group.
Commissioner Scherz, are you, are you willing to allocate $4 million to childcare? Would you be willing to do that today?
I think one of the things I would be willing to do that, but I want to know who's going to pay for the, and where, how's it going to be handled? Is the county going to handle the, and Randy, could you, but I think the county is responsible for the funds, that we need to hire somebody to look after those funds to get things done. Now, Randy's probably got an idea on how to do that. But yeah, I'm willing to put some number, because I've got a lot of things that have been asked for that aren't going to receive any. It's just a matter of priorities. That's just, that's just the way it is. There's some things I don't think county government should be involved with, and...
I think from, for childcare, the United Way has the capabilities to run their grant program based on what gets approved. Everything would have to get approved by the county commission, what the grants look like, and that's kind of behind-the-scenes work we would do. But United Way could handle the money, kind of like Interfaith with, with their money too. But for childcare, United Way could handle it, but we would still have staff members at the county that double checks and work, is working with Lisa and her team all the time to validate expenses. We wouldn't just give $4 million, $5 million in one bucket to any agency. There would be a drawdown and a process that Patrick and I have talked about putting together.
Okay. I like, I'm agreeable with that type of operation, just because there's some that have allocated part of their funds to manage and oversee that, and then some haven't.
I think some may not be at that point yet, just because it, it will take their staff time to run their internal programs, so it's going to cost them to do that. I mean, so there, is going to be some of those costs, we just haven't figured out if their administrative cost to oversee their grants or their programs is the same as the 5% total that the county, county's money, or the ARPA money can be used for administration. So we've got to double check to see those are different numbers.
We've got to work on an agreement between what the county needs to pay for theirs, and what the unit needs to pay for theirs, the project needs. And I think that can be discovered by the administrator of both projects. So if your answer, your question, it wants to be answered, yes, I'm ready to put an approximate number down, okay?
Well, and I would also ask that we extend an invitation to the city, and that we work together, because I think they're willing to allocate a certain amount to childcare as well. And we shouldn't duplicate efforts on administration. I mean, it seems like we're willing to potentially take the lead on it if they would allow us, and they would just, I mean, I, I think they would maybe have a few things to add to it. But if we could have a cooperative program to where there's one program in the county, perhaps we put in a minimum of four, and then they put in whatever they would want to, and it's just one unified program. Like, let's extend that invitation to, to the city.
We can reach out to Judd and see where they're at on these issues.
And I would, that would say, you know, administrative cost is not where we want to spend this money.
It wants to go out usable.
So I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Ms. Sellers. I'm going to make a motion to move the ball. The motion would be that the county approve allocating a minimum of $4 million for the childcare priorities that have been presented by the K-Ready group, and instruct the county administrator to work with that group, with United Way being the lead, in order to negotiate an agreement that satisfies administration's requirements for the governance and administration of those funds, as well as provides details on how the final purchasing decision, decision will be made. I would prefer that would be through a committee of stakeholders. How does that sound?
It's pretty long.
Well, I, I've...
I tried to follow it all, but I just bring up a point of order.
Point of order. Okay. Please proceed.
Can we do a motion in a work-study session?
Well, yeah.
Or is this more of a consensus?
It was announced as a study session, it's an open meeting, but you, generally, you don't take actions in these, you take actions in the agenda meeting. I think that, I think that what you, what Commissioner Frisian presented is something we could work towards, certainly as a consensus item, but it would probably need to be ratified at a future meeting, possibly at that May 20th meeting or the one afterwards.
Is there, is there a statute that prohibits us from making decisions in a study session? This is a public meeting, it's recorded.
Yeah, it's a great question. I mean, I generally fall back on what I call kind of institutional traditions and that. So if you, if someone, if we fought it out through courts, whether that was legal, I mean, it may very well be a legal motion, I'm not going to, I'm not denying that. Just being a president-following conservative attorney, that's generally what I do, is try and follow what the procedure has generally been in the past, which I believe here has generally been not to make formal motions in a more of a study session, and to be safe, ratify it later.
Well, maybe what I could say is, is a motion directing staff to do something which is...
It's the motion that's the problem.
I, I would ask, Patrick, that you provide a legal opinion on that after research, because I think that's complicating to this process if we don't have motion authority in our own meetings.
No, I, I understand. It comes into a coma question whether or not the public had an expectation to be there watching the meeting, and, and, you know, I think it's a very...
Notice of a meeting, notice of a, of a official meeting.
Which we have.
Questions official.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, if you, it has been noticed that it's the ARPA meeting, so I mean, if you all three have two, have you voted in favor of it?
Well, I don't have, I don't think I have one vote, and if, and if you're, you're disagreeing, disagreeing on procedural point, then I don't think there's enough to have them vote anyways.
Well, I was counting the two. I mean, I think if two, two commissioners wanted to do it in an open meeting, I think it's, I think it probably would pass muster, because as you stated, I don't believe there's a statute that prohibits it. It's just making sure that, it's just a coma issue and making sure everyone's understood that it wasn't just a study session, or that they understand it to be a meeting where final decision was going to be taken.
Where are you at on this?
I prefer consensus at this point in time.
It appears to be 2.0 in consensus right now. So Randy, why don't you take back the consensus and draft an item for the agenda?
Okay. But I would agree with the 4 million. Okay, consensus. You bet.
Thank you. And is it, is it, can, can we agree in consensus that, like, a more formal understanding of that issue? Because I'm not necessarily in agreement with you on that, but that's fine. Respect your point on the matter at least, so would you?
For future meetings, if you wanted, I think, a simple statement to the effect that action might be taken at the meeting, we'd probably resolve any doubt.
Okay, well, let's just do that. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. How about that? All right, very good. Okay, moving on. I, next, I think the, the next most developed bucket is housing, and I'll just start with my opinion on it. I, I think we, in good faith, developed some really good options, and I think Interfaith has developed an outstanding presentation and, and request for funding. I think what we didn't do as well is allow the county administration an opportunity to seek all interest in the matter and allow it to develop like childcare did with, with kind of a full community stakeholder buy-in. And maybe we come back and say, well, that's just Interfaith and SCED, and that's who it is, and that's, that's it. But I think we've gotten some more thoughts. You know, Randy got a request from a housing developer, and I have an opinion related to, you know, looking towards breaking the cycle of, of housing and perhaps, you know, seeking to remove some old housing and putting in new or subsidizing certain housing to, to multiply the effect of our, our funding. And so it just didn't seem like we had fully developed that, and I think Randy's willing to help develop that further and, and take all input and come back, and it could be the same. But you got anything to add to that, Randy?
No. Like you said, there was a local developer that had reached out to Commissioner Sellers and then myself about possibly having a program. I know Commissioner Sellers had reached, talked to him previous, at the early part of this, but it kind of leads to, are there other contractors or other people that may still want to get that application in?
I'll stop there.
Or is this something SCED can work on?
My opinion is that we have two really good offers here with regard to, and a good working plan, and also we have a... And also, we have a memorandum of agreement between SCED and, or Interfaith Housing and SCED. And I think those should go forward. And what I would like to see, and I think there's consideration of this, is to be equally fair to all developers is that we institute in this process an NRP. That allows all developers to be able to participate in that, in my thoughts. And, and we've got some start on the, on an NRP from other counties and other, other districts. And so that's where I would prefer to go, is to develop an NRP for all, that all developers and all homeowners and businesses could participate in, rather than just allowing one developer or two developers to have an opportunity during this short period of time. And then, and that's where I'm, I'm suggesting.
What is an NRP?
Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
This is a tax abatement.
It's a tax abatement program and we can set it up on yourselves. And it gives an opportunity for development in a different fashion, rather than just going to one individual or two individual or three developers.
Is that what's already set up via the city on a development?
Well, a lot of cities have that, but it would be similar to the RHID type in a way. It's, it's incentives, it's the difference between the value of a property now and then after the improvements, they get a write-off or an abatement of that dollar amount, a tax dollar amount.
And this would be county-based, but every city could decide whether they wanted to be involved with it or not. And this only involves the county at alarm taxes.
Okay, real quick, I want to, I want to see if I can summarize where you're at. And then Commissioner Sellers, you can, you can go, you're, you're, you kind of, you're taking the position I took with childcare and saying, it's time to make a decision.
Yes.
And you think there's two good proposals on there and we should, we should act on those and then also do an NRP as part of the, the overall housing focus.
Yes.
Okay. Where are you at, Commissioner Sellers?
Well, I think Interfaith Housing has done a lot of work, gone into a lot of communities to get support for their application. I like their application. I'll have to admit, I don't totally understand their agreement with SCED to cooperate. I guess I should understand everything that's sent to me, but I don't. And I'd like to, at some point in time, hear more about how that cooperation works. I, I'm not sure that the Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan particularly fits into what I'm thinking for new housing, but I, I would like to say that when I was assigned the task to investigate housing, I went to a primary developer here in Hutchinson and there was no response there that anything was needed. Now, since that time and just the last week, that has changed. And I think we should hear what might develop there, but I, I think the revitalization of housing has a lot of merit. It's always had merit in my thoughts. When I was back on the city council, it brings to mind two guys walking down the beach and one guy, there was hundreds of starfish there on the beach and one guy started throwing the starfish back and the other guy says, there's hundreds here, you can't save them all. And, and the guy said, well, but I saved that one that I threw back. And I think that relates to my thoughts about rehabilitation of housing. And so I guess I just would like to see a more complete list of the things that the three commissioners are willing to fund before we create these buckets.
But is, is there a compromise here where, where we could, and I want to be clear, I'm not advocating for any particular developer. In fact, I'd.
I'm all for the new housing idea. If we can get some new houses built, I want to look at it. Right now, we don't have a proposal.
Okay, but my, my proposed compromise here is to reassign this to staff to get with stakeholders and see if we can get a, a fully developed proposal back to us, because it seemed like there's enough questions that we can't make a determination today.
Fine. I, I didn't come to make any determinations, so you're ahead of me.
All right. Well, I think there's consensus there. Would you, there's two of us here, would you join us?
Want me to join in with you? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, I've even got some numbers down, but.
Very good. So there's, that's the second bucket, some direction there. I think the third bucket's wide open, more in line with where you're at, Commissioner Sellers. Well, how do you guys want to proceed on?
Economic?
Well, I, I'm willing to just place economic development in, in the whole rest of the bucket. Like, I know that was my particular item, but if we say, hey, you know, I think, you know, there's some potential infrastructure applications from smaller communities like that, you could absolutely make a case for economic development there and so forth. And so if we just had a focus on kind of miscellaneous within economic development slant for the balance, which at this point is, what is it, Randy? I mean, we've got 4 million for childcare minimum, maybe 4 million for housing, and then we've got a couple earmarks.
Right, because there's 440,000 for the fire trucks, depending on how the commission decides on spending that, whether it's the capital improvement reserve or the ARPA funds. So there's a couple million.
Is it 11 million?
12 million, 42,000 is our couple.
$385,000.
Okay, so it's 12 million. Let's say we've, we've softly have consensus here for eight. Is that fair? Feels like it, roughly.
We've already allocated 1.2 also for economic development.
Well, they didn't get that. I, I think they should probably come back with, with the ask on that, since the base grant wasn't funded. But let's start with eight. There's 12, that's four left. I think we originally allocated 1.2, as you said, to economic development focus and another 400 to 500 for fire trucks. So what, what is the math on that? 1.1.7 minus, four minus 1.7, that's 2.3.
We're looking at four, four and a half for housing to divide between.
I'm just trying to get a placeholder, four as a minimum.
Okay.
Let's put 4 and 1/2 as a placeholder.
Well, and I would argue 4 and 1/2 for childcare.
Well, you can argue it. You got to get.
Would you give me, would you give me 4 and 1/2 for childcare?
I think $4 million is, is, is the minimum on, on childcare. I, I would look at, I'm inclined to look at 4 and 1/2 on the, of both, both on housing with primarily the Interfaith Housing and SCED.
You say 4 and 1/2 for both?
4 and 1/2 for, I, I think we're the only ones that allocated any money to housing. The city's allocated funds to childcare. And so I think, to me, that's some difference, okay?
Aubrey, what, you got something to say?
That's not what I heard in that city council meeting, but I don't think they're, I don't think they've decided yet. But I, I heard 10% of their 50% would go to housing.
That is correct.
10% of the other 50% would go to housing. I don't think they've decided that for sure, but that's what I heard.
Thanks. Well, I, I would again remind you that childcare was the primary focus of the report back to us.
Let's put somewhere in the category of 4 and 1/2 for both of them.
Okay. Sounds good. So.
We got a grant back there.
So we got nine.
County has some needs that you haven't discussed.
Yeah, I'm just, this, this is like, this is the sausage, sausage making that we're doing right now that's supposed to be done behind the scenes, but we're doing it in front of everyone. But I, I feel like we're at a place now, I mean, similar to your point, like, hey, we don't have everything together, we need to take some more time. I feel like I, I got what I wanted to have accomplished today was to set some, reaffirm where we're at with childcare and housing, direct the administration to work further on housing and then get us a plan for the rest.
Well, we've got two items that we definitely need to consider. And Randy, I think these are important items. And it's been standing around here for a long time and nothing's ever been done about it. We've had years of talking about it, but nothing's been done. And that's the Arlington EMS ambulance building that's being progressed on with some other ideas and so forth. And that is the rural fire department's update on the old trucks and wildfire, wildfire gear. We're willing to do the District Two, Hutch Fire Department, that kind of money. Why should we not think enough of our rural fire departments to put some funds in them? And I think those are two primary ingredients yet that, that have to be allocated for at some point in time. But I think those are important.
Okay, well, Commissioner Hurst has raised the point of, you know, individual thoughts amongst commissioners on what, what, what needs to be addressed in the, in the miscellaneous bucket. Do you have anything else?
Well, I think it brought us to more, that we're looking at is EMS station and health department renovation and rented building and owned building along with the additional, should there be any additional utilities involved with that? You know, we've talked about that quite often and, and that's moving forward. Those are, and I think we need to set aside some for Reno County replaced lost revenue that can be utilized for that. And I know you want all rate-based, but I think that's something that we, that will come up, depending upon what the studies show on rates and so forth, okay? Let's take care of them up.
Okay, thank you. Do you, you have any comments, Commissioner Sellers, on other items we should be considering?
Yeah, I think the request for some funds to, nursing scholarships has some credibility. I think that that is an area of economic development that we need to consider, having adequate nursing staff. I know the hospital and the college has given us a proposal on that to consider.
I would, I would agree. I think the workforce nursing issue combined with HCC makes a lot of sense, especially with their matching funding they have potentially.
You, you know, your method is to allocate $9 million out of the 12 already, and so you take a million out to the county and you don't have much left.
I agree. I, I think we need to make a decision at some point. I don't think that decisions are going to be any easier as we get more and more requests and, and we lose focus on the priorities, I, in my opinion.
Okay, so you're saying, let's make the decisions today, but we're going to put the cutoff date for applications at May 20th. That doesn't make any sense to me. We're telling them, might as well not apply.
Well, my thought was is that we have two primary priorities and, and we need to focus on those and allocate the funding to those. Whatever's left is what we're asking for more input on.
What do you think? I think we need to start, I do have, I have, with all due respect, Doctor, that I don't think, and as much as I do, I think the Alumni Association of Hutch Community College should be much more involved in providing scholarships and development. I'm not sure, I'm having trouble understanding the county government's role with regard to that. And, and I've got a wife who's a retired nurse and I understand scholarships. I've been involved with scholarships at K-State and I just feel that that's alumni's portion to come in and that the, the college ought to be promoting that among the alumni and alumni groups and.
Can I respond? Yeah. So, due respect, these aren't scholarships. This is developing the space and the laboratories and working with the Hutch Regional Medical Center to provide the services necessary for the college to expand their nursing program by 20 additional students. We simply do not have the space right now. We don't have the staff and we don't have the, the labs. So this is actually hard infrastructure that we've got a million dollars from the, from the state of Kansas if we can match it.
Okay, I misunderstood, so.
That's fine, yeah. It's, it's, there is, we're also working with, probably where this, where you may have gotten some confusion is, we also are working with Hutchinson Regional Medical Center to establish some scholarships for nursing, but that will be through our endowment and it will also be between them and the student nurse. So this is really, these are, this is.
Renovation and additions upstairs.
And hiring some, and hiring staff.
All right.
Thank you.
Randy, how do you feel? Have we given you any clarity?
Not really. I mean, you've clarity of 4 and 1/2 million for the two buckets, housing and childcare. And that makes, but with the deadline, so, let me see if this makes sense. With the deadline for applications that'll come in, Patrick and I will work on developing, whether you call it scoring or rating or some method to tie the request into your priorities that you guys have talked about, maybe meet with one commissioner only and really talk, before bringing this back into this open meeting, then we'll be more organized about what the requests are, what we've heard your priority, priorities are, and score the, rate the applications to say, to give you options, to make your options easier when you're looking at it versus a list or a spreadsheet and just whatever comes to mind at that moment. So.
I like the scoring idea.
I'm, I'm clear that you want 4 and 1/2 million to housing and 4 and 1/2 million to childcare, but not on economic develop, I mean, those others, the rest of the requests, I recommend we do scoring or rating of them as they come in.
I think that's where we generally landed, is that the balance after the eight to nine million is where you're going to do that work. Is that what you understood?
Yes. Other than the, the one unclear, and I know Commissioner Frisian, you and I had this discussion yesterday, is childcare seems to be pretty clear that it's with United Way. Housing, as you've talked about today, if there's other applications, is it Interfaith and SCED or is it Interfaith and SCED and others? Is the 4 and 1/2 million that's housing, is that really for them? Or is it for, if there's other requests come in, that's where we're at? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, to, to reiterate. Yeah. I, to reiterate, childcare, it seems like we have a plan. We've unofficially directed you to memorialize that. I think your point on housing is correct and there isn't full consensus or full understanding of what it is or who's driving. And then we're asking you to coordinate with stakeholders to develop a consensus. And if it doesn't happen, then we have to make, we have to figure that out.
Okay. So I'll be getting with Interfaith and SCED.
And the state of community stakeholders.
Right.
Get everybody to get a community foundation and like that's, I think what we're saying.
Okay.
Go figure that out. And then the bucket remaining, you're going to score it out, put a deadline of May 20th or whatever he said. Was it May 20th?
May 20th, Friday.
Seems like, okay. Seems like we're close. They didn't quite get all of Commissioner Sellers' consent, but, um, I'll ask the commission here. A lot of stakeholders here. Do you want to, like, I would limit it to maximum of five minutes, your most important point. Do you want to hear?
Yes. I think it's good.
I would very much like to hear how Interfaith and SCED is working together on this rehabilitation. I got the verbiage, but I don't understand it. Could the two of you make a five-minute presentation on that issue?
And if you...
Anyone else?
I think we asked people here, so I think they should have the opportunity.
Clint and SCED, please discuss that cooperation and how that works.
Clint Nelson, Interfaith Housing. Thanks for the opportunity today. So one thing I picked out in your conversation just now was still, uh, a little, uh, a little hesitant on what the housing plan is. I don't know if that's goal and outcome driven. We by design created a plan that would allow us, the startup funding, to reach out to the communities, work with them to identify their needs. I think it's worth noting in the tone of this conversation, we've had at least two rural communities that have began discussions with us about moderate income housing developments. And if they were given an option to utilize a certain pool of housing funds through ARPA, that they would prefer we meet with their economic development group and look at options to source that fund into a development. So those conversations are happening currently. As far as the existing housing revitalization, for us, seeking a partnership with SCED was really just an enhancement to our plan. We believe we have experience and resources to do housing rehab for homeowners in the communities. SCED also has a wealth of experience. SCED has a very qualified, uh, group of inspectors. They've ran multiple block grants in communities all over the state. And so it really is just a strength and two very, um, very capable nonprofits joining up in a way that we never have previous. So we're excited for this kind of consolidated effort with Interfaith and SCED, even beyond this county fund. I believe that will, that will serve us well in the future and will serve the community as well in their housing needs. So Bill could speak more on the actual dollar leverage that will be provided by working with SCED and some of their current programs. It's really going to stretch your ARPA money to do bigger things in housing.
Sure. Yeah. So I think one of the things that's important, anytime you're utilizing federal grants when it pertains to housing, is how do you leverage programs together? How do you make $100,000, turn $200,000, et cetera? So our weatherization funds have increased dramatically through infrastructure dollars. We have really kind of done the math and looked at the number of clients we can serve with Clint's proposal. We can bring probably somewhere between $400,000 and $450,000 in leveraged funding through our weatherization program to the clients in Reno County. That's huge additions. Plus, the thing that we can't really weigh with that at this point is the dollars that are saved in utilities and comfort level for, you know, low income housing and those kind of things. So the weighted effect on your communities is dramatic, obviously, there, but from the way that we look at it, obviously, we're looking at those leveraged dollars and how we bring that and stretch those dollars out to it. The other thing, like Clint said, for us, is it's not just our wealth of knowledge. We're the only agency in the state of Kansas that deals with all these federal programs from an administrative and an inspection side. There's rules and regulatory issues that come with these dollars as it relates to housing. We know those rules, those regulations, all those things that come with it. In respect, Mr. Sellers, Commissioner Sellers, I agree with the new housing. I think that is part of, anytime we're looking at economic development, this is what we do. We do MIH grants, we do rehabilitation grants, but I've looked at the housing assessment tool for Hutchinson and I've looked at the housing needs in Reno County. They're both needed. They're both dramatically needed. This gives us the ability to leverage additional funds and really make an impact for those rehabilitation funds. I believe MIH should be pursued as well and we work with a number of your communities already in writing those grants and administering them and trying to bring those opportunities in as well. So I just think it needs to be a continued collaborative effort with MIH opportunities, but this is a real opportunity to take those leveraged dollars and really take them as far as you can to make those effects where you need to on those dilapidated houses.
What is MIH?
Moderate income housing. So it's designed for infrastructure dollars, the grants to come in and either help with the infrastructure of housing or if the infrastructure's already there, to help with down payment assistance for workforce housing, for teachers, police force, those kind of things.
And that money is available for those programs through the federal government?
Yes, it is. Absolutely. So Reno County is a member county of SCED's. So we spoke at a number of different single community meetings, but you reach out to us, the individual towns can, we go out, assess that, look at it, but we write those grants and obviously help them make sure they're in position to receive them.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah. And what I like about what these two groups are saying is they're going to take some money that we give them and they're going to expand it by using federal dollars and grow it to the extent that they can. I think that's admirable, but it goes along, Chairman Friesen, with everything you've talked about is how can we use ARPA monies to do more than just the monies that we put into it?
Absolutely.
And I think I'm hearing this group say that it's not just going to be our $4.5 million. It will be some number greater than that through these other opportunities.
Well, I think if you read the plan and you sit down with us, it's also about revolving it. So how do we make sure in four or five years, this plan continues and these programs exist so they revolve and they roll over so these don't go away in five years, the funds are, you know, exhausted and you don't have anything still working for yourself? So that was really the intent of utilizing those funds.
So I appreciate the comments. I would say, and it's just the nature of, like, we get so much information.
Sure.
So like, we get overwhelmed with information.
Absolutely.
And anyway, you guys, if this is a partnership, like a single, you know, presentation that's boiled down to the most important points and it talks about how you're going to leverage all the dollars, because I didn't see any. Like I've seen Interfaith, I see, you've got a pretty sizable report as well. Like, one of the things that's been great about the childcare process is that they've come with a unified plan.
Sure.
And they've had stakeholders across the county involved. And that's, I think, the piece that's stalled this allocation. And one other point I would highly recommend, similar to the childcare focus, is if City Hutch is going to allocate any money to this, that we try to bring them along as a partner with the community housing, what's the housing?
Housing Commission.
Housing Commission. There's no reason we ought to be having two different housing plans in the county. Like, it should be one unified plan so we're not duplicating our efforts. And so...
And I think that that's a good point about both SCED and Interfaith Housing is they've been very active in the city of Hutchinson.
But I just, my point is, is that they connect with their allocation. So it's all...
So Commissioner Friesen, I will say, we heard the message at the last meeting. We got together, we were able to develop memorandum of understanding, but obviously getting that developed by this meeting in a full presentation is still being worked on. So we'll have that ready for you, but we do have a memorandum of understanding that outlines that partnership between the two. So if you don't have that, we'll make sure you guys have that for your review, but we'll certainly update that presentation proposal so you can see that tied together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. So obviously, the housing resurgence program is a little bit different animal than the other. Do you guys have any questions about what that looks like? Because again, that's taking kind of old housing stock that's not being used and remodeling it and selling it to owner occupied folks. So I just want to make sure that there aren't any questions about that particular aspect of it.
I don't have any questions. I, again, I'm not an expert in that field, but it seems to me, like, you know, looking at some of my communities, like Bueller as an example, the housing stock there and how it cycles through, like, it seems like some of the smallest homes in Bueller, you know, may get kind of the new paint, a new roof, and then, you know, it's an elderly woman that has it and she, you know, moves to nursing home and then it falls into the hands of a landlord and then that cycle worsens. Like, and it seems like some of these small houses just need to be removed and replaced instead of rehabilitated.
Absolutely. So let me just speak to that. We look at that and we assess that. We determine, is this a demolition project or is this actually salvageable? The programs that we work in with the state of Kansas, we're determining, is this an actual salvage project or product? We bring it up to minimum housing quality standards. When we give a house to someone for a community development block grant, it has new electrical, new plumbing, foundation's good, mechanical's all new. It's insulated like a new home would be. An aesthetically, we, you know, bring it up to modern, you know, look. So I mean, we're essentially handing somebody what's relatively a new home. It's not a demo and infill, but these houses are brought up to what a newer house would be from the standards of code regulations and things. The reason that structure's built this way is we can't generate a profit because it takes too much work to get it there. So that's why that structure's built that way. So we could break even on this and actually put these homes back into people's houses where they want to live in it. And obviously, it's not a rental type situation, but it's workforce housing. And this was brought to us by the communities. These houses are typically blighted, abandoned. And so this was approached to us by actually the city of Hutch and some other communities and said, how do we take care of these houses? Because they don't qualify for federal programs. They just sit vacant. They have these issues. Investors aren't touching them. What do we do? So this was brought to us. We've presented this back as an option to provide this. So this was really an answer for you guys and how we could present that model and put those houses back in your guys' hands as livable, good homes for workforce housing. Thank you.
I think we want some of them to take a little bit of extra work to be, to get rid of the obsolescence.
Yeah. I mean, you know, houses built 80 years ago just don't fulfill the need of, you know, the modern family. It's just totally different. People live differently today and they, you know, they're not, you know, you gotta, you gotta do more than just put new paint and new electrical in them. The floor plants themselves don't work typically. Anybody else that, you know, if there's something significant that we missed? I know most of you have spent a lot of time here already, so don't feel obligated to come back unless you go. Carrie?
Good morning. Carrie May with Hutchinson Community Foundation. I just want to share some appreciations for you all at this point in the decision-making process, encouragements. Thank you for listening to the community priorities that came out of the ARPA task force meetings. I think it's really encouraging for all the people who participated in those conversations that even though there are a lot of competing priorities in the community, these big adaptive and technical challenges that need to address, you can kept those childcare and housing issues at the forefront of your decision-making. So thank you for that. Thank you also for supporting and for inspiring collaboration. At the community foundation, our core mission is to inspire philanthropy, collaboration, and innovative leadership to strengthen our communities. And so by, on the housing issue, by saying we've got two quality proposals at the minimum and we encourage them to work together to have a holistic approach to housing in the county, that's really encouraging. And to Randy and your kind of marching orders going forward and convening around housing, if the community foundation can support you in any way of helping bring partners together, we're happy to do that. And also, thank you for creating that opportunity from this point forward, for having a kind of clear deadline for considering more maybe innovative ideas from the community that haven't been heard yet. I know, sort of observing this process and being inside of it a little bit on the childcare piece, I know that it hasn't been completely clear on how to kind of put forward ideas for you all to consider. And so it sounds like you're doing that at this point and we just encourage you going forward to trust your staff and that Randy and Patrick have a lot to study in terms of ARPA guidelines and the compliance and the reporting requirements. And I know the partners are going to be willing, you know, to do whatever is needed to make sure that they meet those guidelines, but federal grants are a beast of their own. And so just making sure that whatever decisions made today and going forward, that staff can carry those out effectively and efficiently and meet the requirements of ARPA, I just encourage you to lean on them and that, again, community foundation as a convener and a community partner is happy to support that process. But thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else feel...
Hi. I just wanted to touch on Commissioner Hirst and the discussion with the Arlington station. There is a packet included with all of the requests in it, but just wanted to touch on the community need for that essential service in western Reno County. We do provide emergency medical services to that entire western portion of the county. It serves as a centralized response for us out of Arlington. And as you know, someone would know very well by touring the station, there is existing structural issues with that station in Arlington. There's beam structures across it. We've had to heavily modify existing ambulance in that. We've cut the coil springs on it, lowered it to get it into that building. And it's needing, it needs to be replaced. And we've outlined in our request, options perhaps for either new structure or remodeling some existing structure in the community to try and continue to provide that response from Arlington. So if you have any specific requests, like to tour that area, just let me know. Happy to follow up. And there are some discussion points on additional ambulance. It's also been presented into the budget for next year. And then the last one I just wanted to comment on is the addition of mobile dispatching equipment to our ambulances. We're currently the only countywide public safety agency that does not have commuter, computer aided dispatch in our response vehicles. And it serves as somewhat of a safety issue for us. One is actually just getting... One is actually just getting critical information to us in a timely manner, such as examples, safety concerns. We've had a few incidents where hostile patients were on scene, that information was relayed over the CAD system and luckily other first responders had that and relayed it over the radio to us and we didn't enter those scenes. There's other issues along with actual response and then the tracking of our units. So knowing where our resources are available and that's something that I'd like you to consider to allocate in this funding for us. If you have any questions, please let me.
In your information that you covered earlier today for us, there was reference to the future northwest Hutchinson ambulance location. Is that part of your plan?
That is in long-term planning for us. I think as we look at that exponential increase in call volume, that's what we're looking at. We have a heavy call volume in that northern, northwest part of the city and that'd help decrease response times to that area. That's trying to keep you looking down the road for kind of long-term plans for EMS and the community.
Last call.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. We're done. Thank you, commission, for staying during your lunch hour. Appreciate it. Appreciate the continued focus you guys have on this. Thank you to the stakeholders for your continued patience as we work through this. And without all, adjourned immediately.